Please stand and say the pledge. I would entertain.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor of approval as presented, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
There we go.
All right, did we have anybody signed up to speak? Yes, could you say something if didn't? Oh Lloyd. If you could jump up front, that'd be great.
Sure. Those who became.
Farming I just saw.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lloyd Wade. I'm a former super genetic student in the classroom from nineteen eighty-two through nineteen eighteen twenty. The variety concerns. I'm. Have some. Concerns about the quality of the schools and classroom. These concerns are related to overcrowding, loss of educationally valuable programs and classes and and reduced funding from the state due to declining enrollment. Back as far as twenty nineteen, seventy-five percent of our third grade students did not meet. Grade level standards in reading, contributing to middle school or behavior and in time to the high school graduation rate, which presently stands at slightly under eighty-five percent. I find these numbers to be appalling, and so should the community. Declining enrollment figures are due in part to students being withdrawn from the classroom school district to be homeschooled, enrolled in private schools or in public schools in the tri cities. Fifty percent of our high school. Students are off campus for a part of the day. This is a two edged sword because they are also not counted. I. A large percentage of researchers at I rec with the school age children have withdrawn their students. And are being homeschooled in private schools or in the schools in the tri cities. During recent years, again during to declining enrollment, the school district has reduced the teaching staff, resulting in overcrowded classrooms in certain areas and diminished educational opportunity for students. At the elementary school level this past year, fourth and fifth grade teachers were not replaced after they resigned. The result was serious overcrowding of thirty and thirty-one students per classroom. It's almost, it's also my understanding that para educator positions have been cut at a time when teachers and students greatly need their assistance. In addition, one of the two health aid positions at the elementary level and the position of full-time secretary. In the counseling department have been eliminated. Teachers, students and counselors need the assistance of these folks, especially during these times of post pandemic. Events. Here is a list of just a few of the program cuts that have been made in recent years. The professional librarian positions across the district have been dropped and have not been replaced. Calculus at the high school and pre-algebra at the middle schools have been cut. Advanced placement classes such as chemistry and the high school chemistry at the high school have been reduced from five sections to one. In fairness, there are admirable goals that the board and the superintendent, Mr. Matt Ellis have accomplished over the past few years. These include the completion of a new high school. And. Renovation and additions of new classrooms at the other schools. Mr. Ellis has written that each student has been provided a new, has been provided a laptop and that informational technology courses at the high school have been ramped up. In spite, in spite of large cuts in funding for important programs for children and teachers, the board of directors has seen fit to pay for Mr. Ellis's work sort of PhD. While it is important for a superintendent to hold a doctorate, is it the district's responsibility to totally fund this endeavor? One wonders how teachers who are required to earn their fifth year on their own expenses must feel about this inequity. Mr. Ellis is attending classes through Gonzaga University and excellent private school in Spokane. Mr. Ellis is being reimbursed by the district for tuition and related expenses. The program he is engaged in requires sixty credit hours and is usually accomplished in seven, between four and seven years. Each credit costs one thousand ninety-four dollars. Over time, the cost to the district is will be an estimated eighty thousand dollars. Assuming the tuition and related fees do not increase. This practice should be deeply concerning to the community. Note that the superintendent's contract was not included in the board packet for public review. The public. The board. Members campaigned on the need for transparency in its dealings. The public deserves board accountability and must insist on transparency. At one time, the school district was noted for being one of the best in the Akama Valley. With the public's support and insistence on good educational programs and transparency, it will be again, but only with community support. And I. Sincerely hope that that will be happening in the future. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you Lloyd.
Anybody else before we move on? Alrighty. So next on our list is consent items. We have a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So I would ask us to move that approval of the minutes. I found some typos and errors and I apologize. I didn't get it to Selena in advance. We can present your action item.
Okay, so we're going to move C to, how many we got? And we'll move C to the end of action items, which would be E then. That's why we'll ask again, now that we have moved that, do I have a motion to approve the consent items with item C? Move to E, action items.
Some of them.
Alright. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so then we jump down to information items, the child nutrition award. Everybody have a chance to, anything somebody wants to say?
I just, so I just wanted to bring light to the award. There's no money actually flowing in. And but it's a mentorship program, so Darlene Morrow received an award for the two who haven't had a chance to see the the agenda. She received an award for a mentorship program for the food service. I need to probably look at it so I can read it. Anyway, so they're going to come, they're going to review our procedures. They're going to help her find some efficiencies and things, just work with her over the next two years. And so again, no cost to the, to the department other than, you know, maybe a little bit of time for her in that training. But other than that, and it's, it's very short, it's outside of school hours, it's not going to be impacting the food service. It's going to be outside of the hours or in the summertime. And so I just wanted to bring like that and thank congratulations to Darlene for that, for getting that mentorship award.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
Anybody that doesn't recognize this beam of sunshine, this is our new business manager, Amy Hill.
Welcome.
Class of.
Two thousand six.
Class of two thousand six, go Mustangs.
Alright guys, so we don't need to do anything with that, that is just information. Which puts us on to action items. First on the list is payroll and vouchers. Entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion, we approve vouchers and payroll as presented.
I'll second that.
There'll be discussion.
Yeah, alright, do we have any discussion concerning the vouchers or payroll?
Is there any more questions? Do you want me to cover those first?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And so he had asked, there was an invoice for Dorian Studios and that was to print the suicide prevention notices, I believe on the back of student ID cards. And there was one for his pull mark of four hundred and fifty-five dollar calculator. It was actually a set of calculators, so it was a set of thirty calculators. And the USIP, he asked if it was for buses, it is for buses, but it's also for the entire district. I mean insurance, so that's property liability and then also transportation, so it includes, there's a portion of it was for the buses. And he asked about the WASA invoice and do I need to?
Can you give the number when you tell us, thank you.
Okay, so the first one was nine zero five nine eight four. For Dorian Studios. The second one was nine zero five nine 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 for school art. Then nine zero six zero zero one for USIP. Nine zero six zero zero four for WASA. And these are membership dues, so there, that's the Washington Association of School Administrators. And so the WASA membership and then also the AASA membership, so one is for Matt Ellis. For both of those and then Vienna Flores for just the WASA membership.
Incendiary too, right?
On that invoice, not on that, it didn't, it didn't appear on that invoice. But there might be. For nine zero six zero zero six, that's for U Science. And a site certification. So this one, I'm going to read this from the website, this is, Rick Vollett provided this information. It says, U Science provides industry recognized certificates aligned to a variety of subjects that students can take a test in. Test for and or, as a department, we're working to expand access to the IRC. Additionally, CTE teachers are using the growth on the test as part of their student growth goals for their evaluation. It is a program requirement and the number of certificates earned are reported to OSPI each year. And then it provided a link to the list that the teachers can choose from. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer that, but he said it is a very valuable program for the students. So those were the questions from Dr. Rayner.
Thank you, Amy, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jason. Alisa?
I had a couple on the, we'll figure out which way works, works best, Amy. So this is invoice nine zero six zero three eight, project lead the way, and I just didn't know what that was.
That's also.
This is STEM. Yeah, STEM CTE. And so. STEM, science, technology, engineering and math, project lead the way focuses on engineering. And so it's packaged curriculum with training. And so Rick Vollett's leading that and it will go through our CTE and or vocad department.
So new courses that Case and Blair's teaching.
Okay, they're looking at building that out, so it's computer programming, computer science, ethical hacking. Robotics.
That seems like an oxymoron.
Yeah, yeah, so the, yeah, some really neat kind of cybersecurity, some really neat technology based field, kind of vocad stuff.
Similar question for the first item on the, for Agile Mind Incorporated.
Agile Mind is our high school math curriculum and we buy a yearly subscription to give kids have access to, it's for access for the kids and the teachers for the math program, because they do a lot of their assessment and things with the program.
Is that mostly for the assessment then, or?
It's the student access to, because the students have the access to the, to their materials, their assignments on Agile Mind as well. They don't have a paper book, they don't have a printed book.
Hey, I don't have the line item number, there was fifteen thousand, I could be wrong, approximately fifteen thousand or eleven thousand for school official.
Probably referee.
That likely be from the official, I don't know about school officials though.
Did I make that up?
That'd be more like Tracy's Official Association if it was that.
And would that represent all fall sports or?
We, that, I couldn't, I don't think that could be for that because we wouldn't get those bills until they already happened.
I will see if I can try to locate that. I remember seeing it when I was scrolling it and not taking.
In the meantime, Jeanie, do you have any?
I already asked mine earlier and some of them were already mentioned.
Yeah.
Me too, I'm covered.
Okay.
And then on the help you move, is that the last payment or was that supplemental, the twenty thousand?
I believe that was the final payment, give me a second.
Oh, here it is.
Washington Officials Association?
Yeah, eleven thousand eighty dollars.
It could be.
That could be.
Do we prepay now and not postpay?
They always send it to us at the beginning, once they put our schedules into editor.
Okay.
And those come to us and then they adjust them later, so. They do, they do come.
Is that for the year for?
And what budget does that come out of?
ASB.
Well.
For the, for the high school.
ASB.
I can verify. And so I was actually, I went back and looked at the help you move and it is the final.
Okay.
That's eleven thousand eighty dollars.
Nine zero six.
Help you move was twenty-eight thousand seven hundred. That was the final, but yeah, the officials association is eleven thousand eighty dollars.
Yeah. Official fees have gone up a lot since I was an athletic director.
Does that high school and middle school?
High school, fall sports.
Okay. And then that, the what budget does that come out of?
Thank you. Sorry, I will get faster.
You're doing fine.
And I'm gonna go.
Don't worry about it, everybody's watching you. No stress.
Take your time, yeah.
Why don't we go electronic this weekend?
Okay. So we did, in the past, we did have around a million dollars slated for athletics. Just as a reminder for the board, ASB can pay for what they call cars, is the acronym. Cultural, athletic, recreational or social. It's a kind of a collaborative account that the administrator has to sign off on it, but the students also have to vote on it. Has to be reflected in student government minutes. You can pay for certain athletic fees, so coaches, officials. Uniforms, things like that, but they couldn't ever spend ASB funds on something permanent. So the ASB for, for instance, couldn't ever pay for stadium upgrades.
Has it always come from the ASB budget for officials?
I don't know, it's a little bit of the shell game because.
It's a cap code, isn't, isn't, it's an ASB, it's basic.
Yeah.
For soccer tier two, for soccer tier two, volleyball tier two.
It's a combination. There are two different, there's earmarked money, line items, set aside for that, and then whatever is over.
Yeah.
And that comes from.
It's oftentimes tough to tell because it's blended funding where it comes out of two streams and so who's to say what dollar pays for what? And so, in fact, we've even talked about, we've talked about color dollars, right? Like blue, green, red, but when you start blending funds, it's, you know, out of those blended funds, some pay for refs, some pay for coaches, some pay for facilities, uniforms, et cetera, et cetera, technology.
Is it normal practice, like you, you spend your, the basic account until you run out and then ASB picks it up at the end?
Any overs?
So fall probably gets paid for by the oh one hundred account and then maybe even through basketball and.
I have to look up the code for it.
Okay.
But from that earmarked money in, from the district, once that is gone, then it will come from whatever money has been generated from gate and the call out likes to roll over.
Okay.
Is that the answer you wanted?
I guess it's the answer.
The answer.
Yeah, I guess it doesn't matter.
I would say board members pay, pay your entry fees, pay for the officials and everything else. I have no other questions.
Alright, so that would wrap that up. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Alright, EL achieve.
How does this thing shut off so fast? Good evening.
So you're on the ball.
Hi Eric.
EL achieve is our English language development curriculum that we use to address our needs and for public student education. We've been using this curriculum K twelve. This is our secondary, so we're rolling over partnership, that's what's before you. In addition, this cycle also has some professional development for the teachers that use that curriculum, and so that's what is also before you. Are there any questions for, in regards to that? Like stated before, this is specific dollars for program funding, so it needs to be spent on specific things and this one will be coming out of Title III.
That sounds great.
Which is bilingual professional development.
Yes.
Does it seem to be a solid program so far? I'm assuming it was, you wouldn't have brought back.
It addresses some specific English language development and, but this is only one piece of our whole entire program. Which I would like to share with you in the work session.
Is this state, state money, federal money?
It's federal money.
Okay.
It must be spent.
So must be spent during the year, during this current school year then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll be seeing some other additional things come forward to you that's again, specific to bilingual education and or migrant education. That needs to be earmarked and spent specifically in those areas.
Okay.
Category of money is, you know, it's, a lot of people think you can maybe use it on different things again. It needs to be spent in certain areas and it must be spent, it can't be pocketed or held onto. But if you have any other questions at any time, as I said before, please feel free to stop by. Door's always open.
Okay. Alright. Thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Jason, you have any questions for Mr. Lares?
No, thank you.
Alright, well, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the contract with EL achieve.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Alright, so now we're on to second reading of policy and procedure fifty-five fifteen, it's a workforce secondary traumatic stress. Fortunately, I talk way faster than I work, at least on computers.
I would make a motion that we approve, we have to approve at this point, right, on a second.
Second and final, yes. Everybody's had a chance to.
Moved on to it a couple of times, yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy and procedure five five one five workforce secondary traumatic stress.
Okay, we have the first.
I'll second that.
You, I don't think you want to approve the second reading, you want to approve the policy.
Oh, approve the policy.
Yeah, motion to approve the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, don't we call it second and final? And that's how we've always done it.
The second, she said approve the second reading of the policy and procedures.
Oh, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So I should just say the policy?
Yes, second, second and final reading of the policy. Alright.
I'll change my motion to approve the policy of five five one five workforce secondary traumatic stress.
Any questions or comments? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you guys. Call me Mr. Sausage Fingers.
That's after sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're going to move on to the TLC Enterprises Consultant Service Agreement.
So this is for a gentleman by the name of Larry Gregory, Larry is our hearing officer. And so whenever there's a contested suspension of a student, we have a hearing officer come in who's a neutral third party to hear the case and kind of distinguish if the student's due process rights were followed by the district. And then he makes a recommendation to the district as far as the outcome or how we should be carried on. A lot of times this takes place when there's an emergency expulsion or, or an expulsion. He'll come in and do a hearing if the parent requests one. Our administrators are here, they can talk about times where, or at least I know. Mrs. Cole can, hearings that they've been in.
This is also mandatory, correct?
Somebody needs to, somebody needs to do it. A district, like an assistant superintendent can do it, but oftentimes a parent would say.
Looked as being biased.
Yes, yeah.
Does it matter? I mean, the contract that he's provided to us or the agreement has the wrong business address on it. Has the old me to have no address on it.
Yeah, this was a, this was a consulting form that we've used in the past. I know that there have been some questions about consulting contracts and so it's the wrong address. We're proposing this language on this contract. I don't think, since it says process school district number one sixteen, business office, I would think that it'd still be valid.
I would, I would probably feel more comfortable if. I mean, we could approve the, the concept of it, but I guess I would prefer that it had the correct address on it.
Yeah, this one is a black line master, we can scan it and change the address. You can approve it with the address being amended, so.
This is a form we're using. Is this a form we're using often?
Uh, this is, this is a form that has been used in the past.
Probably have a box of them would be.
Yeah, black line masters.
I, I would suggest we dump the box of the forms in a recycling bin and get new ones with the correct address going forward. Or, or use that, a PDF perhaps.
But.
But I, I agree with Director Douglas, this, it needs, we need to always be doing our best work and have accurate information.
But I suppose for Larry Gregory as our, as continuing as our, um. As our hearing officer, he's done an excellent job for the district for many years and. I would fully support. Continuing a consultant agreement with Mr. Gregory, but with the correct address on there, so however, we need to do that. I would can, I would fully support the consulting agreement with Mr. Gregory, but would like to sit with the correct address.
I would move to table it to. The next meeting for approval.
I hate to say, but is this a time sensitive, like?
If somebody does get suspended, um, and they request a hearing and Larry Gregory's not. You know, approved as a hearing officer, we can't use him.
Can we? Approve it with.
Address amended.
With the dress amended. Let's do that then.
You wanna leave the way on that one then?
Can I ask a quick question to the board? Um, is there any other changes on this form that you would recommend if we're going to change it and update it? Um, I guess it doesn't need to be at this, like at this meeting, but if you want to review it and then let matter I know.
Why don't we put it in the work, if we could put it in the work session for next week to just review it? And perhaps have, um, Sean Lumper, legal counsel, review it with any suggestions he has. I'd recommend that as well.
So we have a first to approve it with address, address amended.
What will, what's, what's the accurate address? What's, what will the address be amended to?
Fifteen hundred Grant Avenue.
I, I would second, uh, the TLC Enterprises Consultant Service Agreement with the address changed.
Okay, so were there any other concerns, comments? Alright, guys, hearing done, all in favor of approving the TLC Enterprise Consultant Service Agreement? With the address being amended to fifteen hundred Grant Avenue. Please say aye. Alright, so, oh, wait, 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 we have.
We have the minutes.
The approval of the minutes, which we moved to the bottom, which is now E. But I almost forgot. Do we have a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the, um, the minutes with the address changes, Felisa getting a hold of. The minute. The secretary for the minute changes with the, the spelling changes that are needed.
Are you talking about the service contract we just?
No, we were, we've already moved past that one.
Right. I haven't, I haven't said anything about the changes yet.
No, that's what we were.
That's what I was doing with, I made a motion that. We approved the minutes to the meetings with the, with the changes. Corrections to the typos. Would you get in touch with the secretary to make those changes to the typos?
I would suggest if we're gonna make changes to the minutes that we table it for the next business meeting. That way that the edited minutes will be accurate in, um. On the agenda.
That works.
Since it's a work session, we may have to post it differently.
I would just do it at our next business meeting. We don't need a special meeting to do minutes.
We can carry, yeah, we can roll it either.
And so, and the same with the special. Board meeting.
Thank you. Jason, that works.
Exactly right, that's how.
I withdraw my motion.
You've obviously got better eyes than I do, because I haven't found, yeah, what's the?
So that, there was a name misspelled of a visitor and then on the action item. It looks like there was a cut and paste because we approved the emergency certificates three different times. Um, it was cut and paste it under the PEA contract and the resolution, so. Probably, we'll, we'll also need to go back and watch the recording to get who.
Okay, yeah. So we're gonna table E. Things can be changed and Mrs. Douglas withdrew her. Motion. Which that kicks us down to discussion items, which is the P card program implementation. And we've been talking about this one on again, off again for quite a while.
So I wanted to bring it back to the board just to get the initial thoughts on moving forward. And obviously, this is not for approval, and by any means, I would bring the application back, but I did want to make sure that. The board is something, that, that, that this is something that you all would agree to forward with. And so I provided a number of links and some different information here, really just to get a snapshot. We have a couple, um. Credit cards that we use on an emergency as needed basis now. It's for US Bank, it's not district wide, it's. You know, it, it doesn't make it easy, it's harder to track. And using a program like this, so this is the VMO Financial Group, and they're in twenty-three different states. And they're specific to schools and like counties, cities. And so they're, they designed the program for our kind of accounting system. And they've got a number of policies and procedures, examples and stuff that we can take and we can modify to make it work for our district. And, and really, it just cuts down on, and I want to give an example for a requisition, so if somebody needs to buy some pens. They're twenty dollars, you know, for a couple, a couple packs of pens, right? It goes through four different people for approval for requisition. Then we get an invoice. And then we pay the invoice and that comes through the board. I mean, it, it touches a ton of hands, so we're spending so much money in personnel costs. For something so little, so simple, right? And so for routine purchases, um, often supplies, school supplies, you know, we buy on a regular basis, even some, you know. If the thing that we, we can do, we have to have controls in place, so it's not abuse. But most companies, most entities have credit card programs. And, you know, if you just have to have those controls in place, and so there's not, I don't see a major risk for the district. As long as we have those controls in place and there's, it's nothing more or less than we have now. And if someone misuses the program, we help, we help them accountable. It's that simple. And so. There, this, using the program that I, um. I put some information in the word packet for the VMO Financial Group, there is an opportunity for rebates as long as we pay our bills on time. And, and this percentage base, so we can actually get money back for using this. So, no, that's not my primary reason, but I think that's a great benefit. Um, and so, and I didn't want to overwhelm everyone with so much information, so that's why I put the links, but there's, there's a webinar, there's a PowerPoint presentation. Um, I did include the application just so everyone kind of understands what would be intel in submitting that application. Um, so I know in fact a lot, I just, I think it's a great, a great opportunity for the district. I have heard that we've been talking about it for many, many years. And so I would really love to do that, you know, have that be my first big thing that I do for the district is get the P cards in place. And get it a little bit more electronic. So any questions initially?
We are already in love with their making this happen.
Traditionally, as soon as people say electronic, anything, I'm out, but I do think it's a good plan.
I'll go as low as, you know, people are comfortable, so I, I, we save money on paper.
A lot of things.
And a lot of things. And so this would be the first thing, we do have to provide three years of, uh, credit history or our, um, our financial audits as credit history. And I would be the administrators, I would not have a P card myself, so I can manage other people's limit on the daily. And so they do still give, um, delegated access for things like that, so we're not having to all think constantly. There's no social security numbers attached to the cards, which is a problem right now. We do, whoever the card holder's name is, it's attached to their social security number.
I assume like yearly, this is all trackable or?
Daily, yeah, there's a system you can get on right away and see what kind of activity and turn cards off. Uh, you know, increase, decrease the credit limits, the report that does this specific. And vendor does integrate with our current financial system. So that was another reason why I really liked them. Yes, there might be other options out there. This was the only one I felt comfortable bringing to the board. At this time, you know.
Because if Mr. Bailey starts buying the really nice ink pens instead of the cheap ones.
That's kind of part of the conversation is that you do give, you do relinquish some of that purchasing authority. Um, to leaders, and so you can't necessarily control and approve. What they're spending their budget on, but there are internal controls and so. There's say like a limit on the procurement card, so from time to time, um. They get, you know, uh, like somebody will steal the credit card number and use it, and so. There will be a limit and you'll have to call the, uh, Visa company and reconcile some of that. But, um, by and large, it's good, it does cut out a lot of, you know, it does touch many hands. Um, she was talking about misuse. From time to time, it's common with procurement card systems that maybe somebody. Misuses it for groceries or gas or something like this. And so you do set up, you know, like protocols as far as you have twenty-four hours to reconcile that with the district or self-report. Um, but as Amy was talking about, we have a very antiquated system. Of, um, just, you know, doing a PO process. Yeah, and so lots of paper, lots of time filing and categorizing. Um, but one of the good benefits of that is that we do get to see what people are buying.
On the plus side, though, twelve people don't have to handle it, we can afford to.
Bingo, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so, so she talked about cash back. I know that, um, and I, I talked to the board about this, when I was in Lynn. And of course, Lynn is like this tiny little district, that cash back over the course of a year. You know, that was huge, that was huge for us, like, we've got thousands of dollars back, like. Man, why weren't we doing this all along, so?
Bring back coffee cookies.
Yeah, so there will be, um, it'll come, come through like a resolution to the board. As Amy had said, and we've talked, you know, we've talked about it as a board before. Um, we've talked about it internally before. Um, it's been something since I've been here, that we've tried to get up and going and so, um. Kudos to, yeah.
It was before you were here.
Scotty Hunt thing is where it started.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just stop there.
So nobody has any issues? Alright, so we'll plan to see it in a few weeks then.
You'll give us a, maybe an update, Amy, on how, how you see it's working and periodically.
And so I would have to bring it back for approval before I can even submit the application. And if the board is supportive, I will bring the application back. My goal is to have it back in two weeks.
Okay.
And for the application, and then it takes about a month to get the program up and running. And so what I'll do, I'd have to present like a draft policy. And then you guys have to go through all those processes, but if you're comfortable with at least moving forward the application, we can get those policies in place. And then just not actually activate or ordering cards until that policy is official in place. Be talking to you about this, but I do hope to have it like ready to go within sixty days.
Well, I'm pretty startled, we've talked about it. Off and on, seems like forever, but it's just nice to see it maybe start taking off, so.
Jason, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, maybe, well, I got one question, what is the rebate percentage? Do you know?
It's based, what I have found is that it's based on your actual expenditures. And so until we know how much we do plan to spend through this program, I wouldn't be able to, to tell you. Yeah, but I can find out, I want, when I'll, I'll submit, submit the application or I could reach out to the company and say, this is our estimated, what would our rebate be? And then again, it's based on making sure we pay our bills on time. If we even miss one, uh, we're ineligible for rebate that year. And it's just one time per year.
No, that's on you, so.
I don't think we'll have that problem, but, you know, just as a caveat.
Okay, so my, uh. Uh, my next question, do you know, as part of this P card program, can, can we use it for utilities? Have we reached out to see if utilities will accept it?
Um, I have heard that that's a question, so I can reach out. If the vendor accepts the credit card, then I can adjust the limit. You know, if, if they don't add a fee, so some vendors pass that credit card processing fee onto it. So if we're gonna pay a three percent fee and our rebate, you know, only one percent, it doesn't make sense to do that. If they don't charge us a fee, then. We should do that, because then we're getting the rebate on it, on the backend. So I will definitely look into that. And, and I'm constantly thinking about things like that, so.
For what we're paying in the buses and.
Would it make sense, uh, Amy, I think I heard you write that there was a, like a short PowerPoint? Kind of give you an overview of how the program works?
Absolutely, it's a pretty long PowerPoint, but it, yes, it is available. Would you like us to open it right now?
No. Work session, maybe we can do it at a work session.
Okay.
Try to squeeze it in next Wednesday.
On the agenda, under the additional information and application link, the very first one, the P card PowerPoint presentation, that is the PowerPoint that I'm referring to. Um, but I'd be happy to bring that up at the work session.
Oh, there it is, okay, I see it. Um, I can look, probably look at it too, so.
And I might comment, I retired from PUD and they had to put a limit on what could go on a credit card. Because they were losing too much money, so I'm guessing the entities that we pay large bills with, they're not gonna want to do that.
Any other questions, comments, or please? Alright, well, I would say have at it sooner the better. Which moves us on to the Herring Center Agreement.
Says Cindy Dean.
I seen her, oh, there's just, this is Dean. How was your night going?
In fact, the next two are Cindy. Well, good.
I knew the last one was, I didn't realize this one was.
Well, what would be your preference? Have you read the information? Do you have questions with that?
I think just maybe talking generalities first, um, quick overview. The services.
So the Herring Center back in the dinosaur days, when I was first teaching, used to be the odd. At Seattle University. Um, they have done a lot of great work. They've tied into this national. Research company and would still continue the same work. We have a unique room. It is probably the most unique room that I have seen in my, um, forty-three years of. Education and I've spent it all in special ed. Uh, we have, um. Some really high needs autistic kids. But they're non-verbal. Unless them are, um. Really kinetic and. And busy. And. We have a teacher who's working very hard to make that room work. But what we need is, we need some expert eyes in there. Who have a broader range of experience than what we have here. Who can come in, take a look at the room, see how it needs to be structured. They will coach the teacher, they will coach the staff. They will, um, do some, um. On-site coaching and then video coaching and work with. The teacher and the parents to develop the best program that we possibly want.
I'm succeeding in education. Sorry, I don't have a really loud voice.
Sorry.
So, um, that's why, and our intention was to bring them in last year. But it got late in the year. Um, at that time. We weren't sure the same teacher would be back, so we decided to wait to. Do it with the teacher that would be here this year, so we'd have the biggest bang for our buck. Fortunately, it is the same teacher who's back, so she knows the kiddos. And the same parents are back, so we won't be wasting, um, money. That way on staff that would be leaving.
It's a contract date, is, is this last year's contract? Uh, you have the dates of the contracts, two fifteen, twenty-two, so four, one, twenty-two?
She said, so she sent this out. Recently, so it, it is, she just hadn't gotten the contract date changed, it will start in November.
Okay, so this is not, this is not, of, this is not. This contract is not, what are the dates?
So it will start in November and it will run for two months after that, for four months.
Okay, so we don't know what the dates are then?
I can get you those dates.
So it's just, it, it'll total sixty-six hours between November one and January.
Yes.
So it'll be, it's seven, it'll be twenty-two, twenty-three?
The reason she sent it out so quickly is she wanted to make sure that we were still in agreement with the services that they were offering. The reason she sent it out so quickly is she wanted to make sure that we were still in agreement with the services that they were offering, so we could get it tied. Uh, because they are booking fast and furious. And I know that you guys are particular about the dates. I can. Tell her, you know, that please change the dates and send it back, but the services will be exactly the same. And the cost is the same. They've outlined that um to, in fact, I think she changed the cost on this, but. No, I actually, I think the cost is, is fifteen this time. It went up.
I'm sorry, it's what now?
It's a total of um fifteen thousand.
Okay, so this.
Yeah, because this actually says spring twenty-two.
Right.
Ten thousand five hundred.
Right, and it went up to um five thousand dollars more.
Okay, do we have something in here that says that?
Nope, so this is just for discussion.
Oh, that's right.
So.
Okay, so I guess, before we agree to anything, we'll see something then.
Yeah.
Right, but I'd like, before we keep moving forward, I'd like to know that we've, we're moving forward for a reason.
Yeah.
Because it takes them a lot of work to get everything put together and, and, and to dedicate people to it. If they say. If I say yes, please do that, they're going to sign staff, take them off the books so that it won't. Um, they won't be available, so we're, we're tying up their, their resources.
And I'm not sure how you're gonna get sixty-six hours out of two, two days. I'd like to see a formal proposal, I guess, is what I'm looking for. I'd like to see it move forward and, and hear the formal proposal.
So what it is, is they um. And I can do that. They have the um outline on, those are um, the sixty-six hours. Include the video meetings, the coaching, and, and that training. It's just not those two days that they're here.
Okay.
So, so of the sixty-six, only sixteen-ish are here.
Right.
And the rest fifty are.
Correspondent.
Correspondents and, and um them watching the kids virtually. What happens, the other thing that happens is when you're in a classroom. Every time you add a body to the classroom, it changes the dynamics. So what, what they would see when they're there is not what they would see. When it's just the teacher.
Yeah. So, so it's, she's talking about extremely vulnerable youth that may have triggers and so. Somebody new being introduced to the classroom maybe um triggers a student. Uh, we don't have the expertise within our system, and we're seeing more and more students with. Uh, autism spectrum disorder or some of the behavioral pieces that go along with that. Um, so it's about serving, serving a population that um is maybe underserved and uh. Under-recognized right now. And so reaching out to um people from UW. And uh, trying to get some expertise um to share with us some strategies.
The other advantage down the road with this, and I'm just gonna toss it out there, is once we get. Our staff highly trained and effective at that, it, it's a need across the valley, so it allows us the possibility of opening up. An autism. Classroom that would serve other school districts who don't have the resources to serve their own kids because. They're sending them down to the tri-cities or somewhere and we can keep them closer to home.
And so, and it's important to understand too, I think autism's a spectrum disorder. And so there are students with severe autism, there are students kind of with more milder.
These are our most severe students. These are students that when I was in college would have been in institutions, they would not have been in a public school. So we've come a long ways, but we still have quite a ways to go. And it's not something um that we have seen this number of. Until recently in our school system either, so. I will, I will get you all the dirty details. I'll just tell him that to proceed and we'll go from there.
They'll still need to come back for approval.
Yeah, bring that back for approval.
Jason, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to see it come back.
Okay.
Thank you for listening to that one.
We don't go nowhere yet.
I don't run anywhere anymore. It's, it's scary if I do.
The next one, our, our discussion, I am a stepping stone speech and language pathologist.
Right, we um, we interviewed through Stepping Stones Group. For a speech and language pathologist. She's extremely good. Stepping Stones is kind of the middle of the road as far as um fees for a um contractor. They um, they um, sorry. What happens is if we, the E S D hasn't been able to find anyone. I asked them last year to find someone when we knew that we would be having to replace Aiden. And we knew how hard it was to find somebody. Some of the, we've dealt with a contracting company before. Um, it left a bad taste in our mouth because the gentleman was not effective. And we got quite a bit of pushback when we told the company we wanted them gone. And explained why, and they had to do research to find out if he was doing that anywhere else. Turns out he was and we were allowed out of the contract. This company, every, every company I talked to asked out front, if, if we, if this isn't even just a good fit. Can we get out of the contract without having to buy out? And they said thirty days notice. We're good to go. Um, and like I said, the, the cost is good. Michelle Lowry is more expensive than this person. Um, and the um, she's mad, she can't do anymore, and if. There's just, she could carry another school, we're, we'll end up breaking her. And she'll probably charge us more to do it because she's overloaded now. And the other thing about this person is they are willing to um pitch in. When they have time and do some of the assessments that we've been paying Michelle to do. So we can actually maybe reduce her costs also at the same time. So, due to compliance issues, I, I would like it if you felt comfortable, if you. I, I did make the request to consider approving uh us entering into this contract today. And you have the full contract in front of you. There isn't anything.
This is contract for an actual person.
This is an actual person. She won't be onsite, but she is an actual person.
Is this in addition to Michelle Lowry or instead of?
It's, it's, in addition, it's to replace the speech therapist that we had leave, that we haven't been able to replace. And getting an onsite person is possible at this point.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of scarcity within this position, you know, this position. There, there just aren't enough speech and language pathologists.
So one of the things that I would encourage the district to do, and I may be speaking out of turn. One of the limitations for this is to go back and get that degree is expensive. Some of the solutions that local districts have used is they have paid for that person to go to school. And get their degree with the agreement that they served so long in the district and it's a forgiveness. Otherwise, they pay it back at a prorated rate. We do have people that are interested in going and would like to do that. But the finances, it's an expensive program. And I know that we talk about teachers going. And paying for their own school. I know I paid for my own school, but when we're looking at an area where there's a shortage. It, it seems to me that that's something we should consider. We're gonna have to start growing our own in several areas. Um, otherwise, we're gonna be doing this over and over and over again. And.
We use a. Speech and language pathologist assistants.
Right, and so we do have someone on, onsite in person.
So you can, you can get away with some of that without jeopardizing the integrity of the services for the students. Um, but like Cindy Dean was saying, or Dr. Dean was saying that we're just overloaded and there aren't. Uh, a lot of these speech and language pathologists have gone into being private contractors and consulting with districts. Um, so they're extremely expensive and they're hard to find and hard to hire. If you were gonna have onsite one, so we tried to do things like. Teletherapy and um it's a cheaper option, but it just doesn't serve students as well. Um, but you know, I, I don't, I don't, we're, we're meeting the letter of the. The I E P, but um we can do better uh as far as services are concerned.
So, I have a question. You said teletherapy doesn't work, but my understanding is this is teletherapy?
This is teletherapy.
Vendor that we had.
Yeah, but this, this one is teletherapy. What we were allowed.
I wanna get clear. Is, is it onsite or not onsite?
She is, she is a teletherapist. She is not onsite. The difference is with this company, when we first did it, we weren't allowed to interview. Or select the candidates. They sent us the candidate. In this case, we were allowed to interview the candidates and select the candidate that we wanted.
So, it's tele, speech therapy for, it's high, third, fourth, and fifth graders?
Right.
And then there's someone in the room?
We have a, a licensed S L P A that we'll be switching spots with, who will be onsite with them and also serves kids.
Was the S O P A abbreviation?
It's, I'm sorry, speech and language pathologist assistant.
Okay. And then, how, how many years has it been since we've had continuity of the speech therapist?
It's, it's been since Nikki Denny, right? It's been since Nikki Denny, so that was. It, that was Ray Tollcatcher. Ten years.
So we've had a different speech therapist every?
Not, no, not every year.
Not every year.
Cameron's been with us for a couple of years.
Um, Michelle Lowry was with us and then went to contracting.
We've actually had Michelle Lowry along. She just has.
Yeah.
So who does the I E P give for speech? Michelle or the tele, the tele speech therapist?
Well, the tele speech therapist, because she's the certified therapist, so she would be doing a, a virtual meeting with the parents. She's the licensed therapist. Michelle Lowry does it for her schools, which are the other four schools that she does.
Okay.
And sometimes that's done via telether, via a, a team's meeting because she isn't onsite that day.
And where, where is the person located?
This person is located in Spokane or Seattle.
The same time zone?
Same time zone, and that was the other problem we had. This is also a person that we're going to try and convince that she really, really. Really wants to come here. Why we're doing this.
Why would they do that if the contract doesn't say that? They don't have to drive?
No, 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 that she, she will leave. Long-term that she would like to come here. Part of what they don't get is. They're right, like Michelle Lowry, her rates are higher, but she isn't getting retirement and benefits. When you look at the retirement and benefits that. We're not paying or would be paying for Michelle, it's, it's about the same price as what she's charged now. And that's the other piece with those companies. They aren't paying for those people. They're just, the people are working.
When Cindy talks about recruiting like speech and language, like, considering paying, it's the same situation for school psychs.
Yes, we've got it for school psychs. We have it um. For um if we wanted to get a certified occupational therapy assistant, because we have an occupational therapist that you guys approved. But we have a bigger load than one person can carry. If we were going to do that for an assistant, so we had that too. We are real fortunate with the lady that we got because it was a friend of a friend. And who's, you know, so.
I'd like to, you said that we have staff in-house that would like to. Get the, the, the training.
Yes.
To uh have this job, but it's expensive to get that training.
Yes.
I am very familiar with training. At Patterson, I needed a bilingual teacher. I needed one really bad, and I took Tanya Steinbach. And I provided, she, she became my bilingual teacher. She took the classes. I paid for her. When she completed credits, she turned in her credits that showed me that she successfully passed the credits. I reimbursed her for those credits. And it served her, it served me until she got her bilingual certification, but I just reimbursed her for the credits. For passing those credits. She had that certification. Yes. Yes, anyway, and so I, I, I'm familiar with the process you're talking about. Why can't we do something like, it's similar, I guess it's similar to what you're talking about. Why would something like that not work? And then it was just a, not a written agreement, but it was just an agreement that then we would. She would just continue to work, you know.
It would have to be a written agreement.
Yeah, but it was just a, an agreement that she would just continue then to work, but that fulfilled our need of having a bilingual teacher that in the district.
So some, the districts that are doing that have a written agreement, and the reason is, if you get recruited to. We pay less than Seattle does.
Right.
The person gets their degree, you're looking at going to Seattle.
Right, but you could have in a written agreement that we will help you, but then you owe, you know.
It's usually five years.
They call them golden handcuffs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it's prorated out, so that would be something that would have to um. Have board approval to do.
Right.
We'd have to have it.
It'll be something we could look into.
Could look into it.
It's a strategic position. That um, the board can consider. And I'll talk a little bit about strategic planning in my update, but. This was just kind of to create some dialogue and, and if it needs to come back to the board for approval, then we can uh. Bring it back for approval.
But if, I, I would like to get this lady on board, otherwise we're gonna have a.
Yep.
So, I think it has to come back for approval because we already did the action stuff, doesn't it?
Yeah, I wanted to discuss that.
Yep.
But yeah.
Yeah, we can get it approved, and we may even do a, a special meeting for the purpose of approval. That, you know, like a one item meeting, if the board's open to that, um, so we can expedite it.
We got two in a row already, so. Yeah, I'm cool with moving forward. If nobody else has any questions or concerns.
I just had a quick question. You were saying that uh, we could pay for somebody's education. Are we talking like. Someone like Cameron Holt for her to get more education to add to what she has, or are we?
Cameron Holt is in her program already and is already enrolled, and she's um doing her internship with us. So what it would be is we're looking for. I have a teacher in the district who has wanted to be a speech therapist, can't afford to go. That's a person that we would take, pay for them to go. And then they could then come back and work for us as a speech.
I think we would have to have a system to open up the opportunity.
Right.
The contract, I mean, there's all sorts of, it's a funny issue. We'd have to.
Yeah, so there's a lot of work behind it, but it's, it's taking people and, and saying this is what we need. What we know we need is we have five buildings. We need four speech therapists. Because we need wood strand, it can go together with another school, and then the preschool is tagging on. The K R V, so we need, you know, that.
That there are ways to do it.
There's ways to do it, so, you know, I'd be really happy to sit and have the conversation with you. I'd be happy to see what other districts are doing. Are you comfortable at this point with me telling? This company that we're going to move forward, just like making the commitment to the Herring Center?
I would just say it needs to be approved by the board, but we're gonna bring it back to the board at a special meeting in the next few days here.
Okay.
Do you still have the speech pathologist position posted?
Yes. Yes.
And we had applicants that is.
We had one applicant, she only has a um, no. We did not have an applicant there. No applicants. The, the one that we had was for the school psychologist. And that was not a qualified applicant.
Tele speech therapy for these little, I mean, they're not the littlest kids, but third, fourth, and fifth graders. Tele speech therapy for these little, I mean, they're not the littlest kids, but third, fourth and fifth graders would just be so difficult. And it's concerning to me that we haven't had continuity. So, you know, they have to start all over. I mean, I need to have the notes, but you read it, but it. Like, go over, tell them and be like, okay, well, what's your tongue placement? Is it on the roof of your mouth? Is it here? I mean, I would think.
So one of the.
Carry over as well as in person.
It, it's done differently. One of the things that we do have experience with is successful. In-house, online, speech therapy. We had to do it during COVID. Um, the people that were here then develop methods to do that, to get the placement, to do those kind of things. The um, the people that are teletherapists have special training to make that work. So. Is I, I, I'm a big advocate to face-to-face instruction whenever possible. But when we can't get it and we ha- have to have it, this is, to me, this is. The last thing I would want to do, but I, I don't wanna wait till we find someone.
Right.
And be out of compliance.
I think, I think it's a temporary solution, a Band-Aid, and I think we have to have the board figure out how to.
And we can keep looking. That is the advantage. We have a thirty day. Warning. So if we do locate a live person, we can cancel this with thirty days notice. And it will take us about thirty days to bring a new person on anyways because of the fingerprinting and the wait time. And this lady is fingerprinting, had her background checked. They have to pass the same thing to be here. Are there any other questions?
Jason, do you have any questions? Uh, no, the only, and I, I might be I heard wrong, but um, there is a no solicitation agreement to this. Um, I think it's a two-year, unless I heard wrong, I thought somebody said. You know, maybe in the future, this person could work for the district, but maybe I misheard that.
So they have to be working, we, they can't, we can't hire them directly while they're still employed. They would have to separate, be somewhere else and then come back, is usually how it works. So they would separate, they could go to work for a different district and then they can come back. Or they can go to work, um, leave, go to work via teletherapy for another district. And then come back.
I also don't read it as a thirty day out on this termination. Just if we want out thirty days, it says. If there's a deficiency with the, with the provider and that they, they have thirty days to cure that deficiency. But it doesn't say that we have thirty days out.
So I asked the um, recruiter and I'll get them to send that in an email. That was one of the things that she agreed.
They would need to be in the contract.
Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just have one more question. Derek is in the room. Do we have this program for your children? Or do we work together and there's a bilingual person?
So, a lot of our students do belong to her program as well. Um, there are some. You know. Collaborative work, but not specifically for that purpose.
So we have, like, we have an interpreter for the family and interpreter for the student.
Yeah. Not all the people that are providing speech therapy are.
So when we have a, when we have a student that's monolingual, we have used. Um, the interpreter that we've hired for our office to go and work with the speech therapist.
How's that working?
Right now, we don't have any monolingual students. But in the past, that has worked fine. In fact, the interpreter that we had. Um, at one time, Ramiro was interested in going back and doing speech and. Couldn't afford to do it, so. But he did go and work with the speech therapist for the monolingual students. So that's part of that role.
I agree with Director Riley, though there needs to be a spelled out thirty.
Okay, I'll ask him to put that in.
But yeah, it's, it's not perfect, but it's.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sid.
All right, gang, that leads us to. Reports. Mr. Ellis, why don't you jump in?
So I sent the Patterson proposal onto the board. Um, I'm looking for feedback, feedback on that before I bring it uh, forward for approval. Um, strategic plan. I had, um, we talked about a strategic plan. You give me the assignment to reach out to Prosser Memorial Hospital. Um, and then look at a different quote. I reached out to C E E, um, Eric Bowles, who's one of their directors. Um, we've used them before. C E E does their strategic planning around a perceptual survey. And that's one of their metrics and markers. Uh, it's about seventy thousand dollars over the course of three years. But that also includes the surveys and development of the strategic plan. Um, I reached out to Craig Marks uh, about Prosser Memorial Hospital Strategic Plan. Um, they use, he was saying that he's kind of pieced some stuff together over the course of his career. Um, part of it was the Baldridge Excellence Framework that he'd been exposed to. That framework has a, it's a, it's a massive framework for developing a strategic plan. Um, but it's, it has healthcare dimensions and you can also specifically, they have um, a framework kind of for education. But, so I've, I've done that, uh, I forwarded uh, kind of a strategic plan that the C E group. Um, did onto the board. Um, and so. Uh, I wanna, I wanna go on record and make a recommendation to the board that we consider the development of a strategic plan. Um, through one of the, one of the vendors. I think that that's vital and uh, we actually need a strategic plan for our district. Uh, in conversations I've had with different directors, uh, they're recognizing it too. Uh, the other piece that I wanna talk about as well is um. Uh, board, a board retreat to develop board protocols. Um, we've talked about board retreats in the past. We've talked about board protocols. Um, we've talked about kind of some training through WASDA or E S D one oh five. Um, but I do think that it is really, really important. So. I uh, I wanna go on record and make a recommendation to the board that the board consider. Um, a board retreat with the development of board protocols. Um, we can use WASDA, like I said, we can use E S D one oh five. I've even presented information um, from uh, Dr. Rick Cole, uh, who is in Sunnyside for many years. Um, and he does work with uh, school boards. He has what he calls. Uh, four T um, system that it's trust through uh, trans- trust through transformation of teams. So, uh, yeah, and then the last thing is. Community relationships. Um, we have a couple of people, Eric Lares being one, who'll be participating in Prosser Leadership. Prosser Leadership is a leadership group, um, that every year we try and get some of our employees involved in. Um, it's like a, a four hundred dollar tuition. And so um, I went through the program my first year. Um, Brian Bailey and Michael Denny went through it uh, the year after that, and then Kevin Gilman did it. And this year, Eric Lares and I believe Rick Follett um, are gonna be doing it. So we're gonna sponsor a couple of people to do that work. And really what it is, is it develops their leadership skills. As well as um, giving back to the community. So they engage in a community volunteer effort. So that's all I have to present to the board. Um, please let me know about the Patterson Proposal. Um, so I can, I can work with uh, Superintendent West on that.
So do we wanna talk about the Patterson? Uh, do we wanna talk about each of these things tonight?
Um, either, either or. Um, I know that. I know that it's seven, seven nineteen. Um, I know that Deanna has some stuff and Amy has some stuff too. Um, but yeah, if the board wants to, or if the board wants to talk about them at work sessions, we can also do that.
Okay, so.
I think it should be in a work session and in a package, so we have the information in front of us. So we're not, well, maybe it's this or maybe, I think that's the proper way to go.
Okay, well, we can move, we can move all these to the work session, however, they've been in front of us. Uh, a number of times already, so. What do you wanna do?
Make a decision in the work session.
Okay, then let's make a decision. Let's find a make a decision about these four things at the work session. Cause to my knowledge, we've had these in front of us at least three times, maybe. All right, that's what we're gonna do, Andy.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Now you take over. So now we're on to the Assistant Superintendent Report, so we'll start with Deanna.
There you go, Deanna. Oh, no, no, no.
Um, so I've been training with Craig this week, and so that's been really great. Um, we've made a lot of progress. We're doing, um, we got the grant reporting done. We're gonna be starting. Or we're doing enrollment at the end of this week and then we'll do fiscal year end uh, next month. So a couple of weeks out from that. Um, so that's been going really good. And so, of course, if there's any specific information, you know, you guys have requested or wanna know, I'd be happy to get that too. Um, but just kind of get my feet wet, learning what to do, how to do as quickly as possible and being forward and. Just a lot with within the year end.
Thank you. Deanna.
So, this isn't really in my report, but I was just thinking right now, these are both my former students sitting on either side of me. It's just kind of scary. Um, I'm just too old, but I have three things. Um, we met last night again, I met with my sexual health committee. Um, we've actually found. At least one curriculum for all three levels, the, the uh, four, five, the middle school and the high school that we like. Um, that we feel comfortable with. There's a couple more things we're gonna look at at our next meeting. Um, and then I would anticipate that we're gonna bring a recommendation for that curriculum to the board in October. And we'll bring it for um, information first to talk to you about it. And then for approval. Um, probably toward, at the, the last meeting in October. That's been the greatest committee. I really enjoy working with them. Um. Uh, yesterday I met with uh, Thrive, the hospital, Deja. And then Michael, David Funk and Brian. We all met to talk about. Um, some solutions to help us find mental health supports for our students. Um, you know, we, one support we do have is comprehensive mental health. But because of their staffing shortage, they've cut us to two days a week. We have them one day for the middle school and one day for the high school. And we used to have them five days, so that is unfortunate. Uh, ultimately, we're pursuing um, grants to try to find some funding. I actually found a grant today that's really relatively new, specifically targeted to, to places like schools for this reason. Um, and the hospital, you know, is talking about loaning us their grant writer to help us with writing that. Because they are very different than the grants that I typically write. So, um. That, you know, we're moving along, but it's, it's everyone, you know, finding money and finding resources are the challenge. But we're hopefully gonna um, be able to come to. I mean, it's a great work group, so everyone's very interested in helping us find resources and support for our kids. So that's been great. Um, I have a meeting with Heather and Richland. Richland has kind of a new innovative program and they've gotten some grant money. We have a meeting on Monday um, with them to kind of find out where, how that's worked for them and what, how, where they came up with those resources. Um, my last thing is, is I'm pursuing uh, beginning transitional kindergarten. Um, transitional kindergarten is, I've maybe talked about it before, I think I have. But it is uh, kind of like pre-kindergarten, starts in January. And we bring in four and five-year-olds that would be starting kindergarten the next year. And then you get that school experience and um, helps to build their skills. And the things that they need to be ready for school and to come into kindergarten, um. More ready for kindergarten. And so I'm, I'm working with the E S D, I'm waiting to hear about that. But I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to do that. Jesse has promised me two classrooms, so we might start with one class. We might start with two. But I'm pretty excited about that. I think that will be a great service to our students. We have students that fall into. If, if they don't, can't afford private preschool, we have E cap, but there's restrictions and limitations. They have to qualify. So there's people that fall into and kind of a gray zone. Maybe they don't, they don't qualify for the Inspire Services. And then we have kids that maybe the parents don't enroll them in kindergarten that might be E cap qualified. Um, but they're five, and if they're five, they cannot be in E cap, but the parents maybe wanted to wait because they were young or maybe not ready, so. Um, I'm hoping that we're able, but we'll be doing that this year. So when I hear, I'll let you know.
But with this TK, you get to claim the F T, correct?
Yeah, so we get, if, if we get the grant money, um, we get ninety-two thousand dollars for planning, so that's planning, training. Um, the, basically the startup for the classes. And then we get a portion of money for the, but for the F T, just like we do for any other student once they start. So, um, our, our hiring pools late in the year have been much stronger than they've been. In the recent years, so I'm hopeful that, it also is kind of timing wise, somebody who might have student taught in the fall and is finished. It might be ready to come on and start in January, so stay tuned.
I do wanna say, I appreciate the work on curriculum. Um, I've had a couple of superintendents email me and I guess curriculum's a big talk, topic in a number of different districts. Um, but I do appreciate your work on that.
Um, my, all our, the K five E L A implementation, um, I, I consider talking about in my report. But I could talk about it in every report, probably. We, we've had, we have um, an onsite training next week, coaching in the classrooms, helping. Teachers with baseline assessments and um, this is going to be the first time since I've been here. That our three elementary schools will be on the same page with their curriculum for E L A, short of maybe some Basels back in the nineties.
To back up a second, Deanna, talking about grants, in your opinion, are we getting to a place where. Having a grant writer on staff would be worth having a grant writer on staff?
I, I don't, I mean, if we're gonna have someone that dispends all their time pursuing grants, I, I think you, you could do that. Um, I, I do most of the grant writing, Eric has to do some, um, and Rick does some. There's several of us that do that. A lot of our grants are not, not necessarily competitive. Um, but the c- competitive grants, usually when we're doing competitive grants, it's stuff that's coming down from the state. Sure, would I like more help with that? Sure, but I don't think, unless we're really gonna go like all out pursuing grants. That it would be a big expense. Um.
When, when she's talking grants, they're categorical grants through a program called I Grants. Um, and they do come down through the state. Um, and there are different funding allocations. So it's not, it's not what Deanna was saying, like competitive grants per se. Where you're identifying grants that can make a difference for your system. And uh. They, I think, like, uh, I'll reference like the Gates Foundation, used to do really competitive grants. And it was a boatload of money. And districts were really interested and. Um, principals and superintendents spent a ton of time doing that. And once that money started flowing in. I mean, they could buy technology, consultants, curriculum, all sorts of stuff. It was pretty loose, but you had to have a plan for it. Um, so if the, I, I would say kind of the question behind the question is. As a district, do we wanna start pursuing competitive grants? The thing with grants is that you, you get money, but there are requirements to.
Almost always strange.
Yeah, and so there are rules you have to follow. A lot of times they'll want uh, your data, access to your data and even access of data. And so the, they, you know, it's their money, so they call shots. So um, they can be good. But they can also be a lot of work to manage. Um, not just the writing of it, but the management of that grant, so.
So we, as, as grants come, I mean, pretty much they get funneled through me. Um. For the most part, I mean, I get all the notices. If it's something that is something that, like, we feel like we can take on. Because when you get a grant, it's about more than just writing the grant. It's about managing the grant and staffing the grant, whatever that happens to cover. We apply for anything we think, you know, we, what we can do and that we will see benefit from. Um, there is an example that um, we, I got a notice about a community. Um, immunization type project. Um, I sent it to the nurses. This was just this week. What do you think? And Linda Kirk responded and said, you don't need to provide immunization clinics. Our immunization rates are really high. This is, this really isn't something that we need to spend the time on. Um, TK, I wrote that grant. It, between with connection and doing some of the, like, work with the E S D, it probably took me two or probably three hours. I can do that, I mean, I can do those kinds of grants, when you talk about those really big competitive grants, you're talking about. Writing a college paper for your.
Yeah, the, the whole, I mean, yeah, submission of logic models, there's a whole thing that goes along with it. But I think a first step on that would be, they have subscription services where you can subscribe and they'll send you information. Um, so that would be a first one to just explore and say, for this subscription fee, non-committal. Is there anything out there that might benefit us? And then we start looking at that, like, if we start to identify stuff like, yeah, let's go after that money.
So we're gonna be pursuing some playground grants to try to help. Um, I got, we get, yeah, I'm waiting for a report from the insurance company, I'll bring that, it's supposed, I'm just gonna get it tomorrow, I'll bring that to the. It probably in two weeks, but the, it's not looking good on River View's playground as far as what is able to be. Used and what isn't able to be used, so we've got some, some things to address there, but, um. Uh, Clearwrist did an assessment for us earlier this week, so I'll have that report, um, hopefully tomorrow, and then we'll. Be able to look at what we can do and how we need to move forward to make sure that our playgrounds are fun and safe.
Those words usually don't go together.
Well, they have to go together for us, fun and safe together.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, that, uh, moves us to board, board member reports, Jason.
Um, yeah, I just had a couple things. Uh, one, um, kinda looking into Wazda a little bit more, learning more about what they do, um. And it looks like they had nominations for our district, which, don't quote me on it, but I think it's District eleven of Wazda. Represents us, if I'm not mistaken, but those, there's nominations for that board that close on, actually on Friday. And, um. And I think, you know, for a number of years, you, you know, conservative school districts have been reluctant to take part in Wazda governance. Um, maybe because they, you know, they felt that, you know, our opinions or, or votes didn't matter, but I think it's time that we. Reactivate our, 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 um. Oh, what's the word? You know, be more active in Wazda and, and some of the stuff that they're trying to either push or support. Um, I think it's part of our duty, and I'm not sure how to do that, I'm still kinda learning on it, but I think as a board, we can kinda look at some of the. Policies or the directions that Wazda's supporting or the direction that they wanna go. And, and it'd be, I think it's prudent that we start having an active voice, um, in our Wazda. In Wazda as far as that moving forward. Um, and then one other thing, I, I, I do agree about the strategic, strategic planning. That you mentioned, man, and I hope we can get that done sooner than later. Um, and then lastly, I, I think it's, I, I was able to read a letter on Facebook by the Zilla Vice President or Vice Principal. After our game on Friday, uh, football game on Friday, and I, and I think that just shows the. I don't know, I don't know what the right word is for this either, but how, what's that?
Uh, that we demonstrated a lot of class.
That's right, um, I think our student section did a great job, um, and, and I really wanted to give a. A big thank you to Ms. Blair, and she, I think she's doing a great job, and actually I saw a little bit of that. Um, at one of the volleyball games I was able to go to here recently, you know, where. She just asked the kids to pick up, and man, they just ran right, right to it and picked up the stand, so. I just wanna appreciate her work and everything she's been doing, thank you.
Lisa.
Oh, I, on one of my list items for tonight was the playground equipment at Keen River View, have we. Do we have any like a stopgap solution, have we been able to buy toys or?
So the, the pavement is now painted and it has, they'll be able to have like their. It looks great, um, there's like a world, there's like a map of the United States, and there's like little alphabet, like little worm and. Um, they, they'll be able to get back to their tether balls and those kinds of things, plus. When, when I, when I was out there, Jesse was out there with me with the playground consultant, and we're. We're gonna move temporary fencing, because the place, the place surfaces that are closest to the fence, the kids can still play on. So they're gonna, now that they're, as, we need Fowler to finish up, so there's no equipment and people there, we, we can fence the. Well, the big blue area that has big blue and the slides, because all of those pieces of equipment need to come out, they're not safe. The slide, and they were also, I mean, this was gonna tell us, cause he already told me this, and the swings are not safe. And their, their swings were, are the number one injury causing, um, piece of equipment, because. What do you wanna do? You wanna swing as high as you can, and then a lot of times you wanna jump off it, because that's fun, and that's how one of my daughters broke their arm doing it. Um, so that we are going to have to. The footings with the, with the groundwork, the footings in the big blue slide area, the footings are way above grade. And, um, the amount of cushion you have to have now is ten inches. Uh, well, excuse me, twelve inches, three inches, i- it can be different things, but there has to be twelve inches, unless you have like this compressed rubber stuff, it can be a little thinner, but. There's no way to, to, to solve, the, the footings are the footings, I mean, we, we can't fix that. Um, we've already pulled one piece out, the, they called the birdcage, because it was, like, there was this much, there was ten percent of the concrete still underground. Um, so that's gonna have to be addressed, um. Where, where I've been working with our landscape architects too as well, so they're helping, and they're the ones that sent me resources about playground grants and. Um, there's actually a trade show, um, for maintenance people, uh, next Friday. Jody, Jody and Eric considering attending, um. And maybe Jesse and Tote, where they have, like, all these vendors are there, and you can make a lot of connections, and playground people, I guess. Do a lot of grant stuff, because otherwise playground equipment gets put in and it's there forever, and they don't sell a lot of it. So they have a lot of grants to help, you know, upgrade playgrounds, so we're going to attempt to, um, fence. We're gonna put temporary fencing around the unsafe area, so the kids can go out beyond the, on the asphalt. And around to the place, uh, the equipment that's up against the fence, so we'll fence all the rest off, and the kids will be able to play.
And the asphalt's not dangerous.
Well.
It is, it is.
Everything's dangerous, if you, depending on what you're doing on it, but no, the asphalt is there and it will stay there, and there's four square and tetherball poles and all those kinds of things, so. So that Jesse's gonna do that as soon as we're able to have the kids out there, and they're, they're, they're close to done out there, but they were not done two days ago when I was there.
But the, yeah, the big one is that fall zone, whether it's gonna be a ground compressed rubber, or it's pea gravel. Um, and of course, the, the jungle gym structure is where it's most important, that kids are more likely to fall. But the, I think, uh, the upgrade period from the painting of, in fact, I still remember, and this is Dr. Waits. Um, you know, his move when they did River View the first time, there's a big number snake and number squares. And, um, when I was going through Keen River View, it was, um, you know, something that was new, and as a kid. You'd be so excited to go out to recess and exercise and run.
You might know the answer to this, because that was a question, how old big blue is, a big blue is literally to the point where.
It was.
We can't use a hu- a bunch of stuff.
The first one was, uh, yeah, like a wooden structure with, it had a red kind of, uh. See-through dome lens on it, and then they pulled that out and then they put the blue one in, but, but. Just to tack on to that, yeah, we are looking for Temporary, uh, Solutions Director Riley. Um, and Toys and Indiana's kinda spearheading that, um, I think that it is important. Uh, we do have some money, uh, with enrollment stabilization, I believe it was like nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, I, I do think that we wanna be conservative with spending that, because it was a one-time infusion. Um, but I, I do think it's important for kids to have a place to get their, get their wiggles out, as they say, so.
So.
Question on it, we look, the equipment lost their grandfather status, right, the playground equipment, because so much of the building was changed. How was, uh, so this is a question that will go to Dan Perfoy, how is that not foreseeable in this construction? And why are they not paying for that, was not a construction expense, we shouldn't have to take that as an expense, more than sixty percent of this building was changed. That's when grandfather status is lost, that should have been a foreseeable construction expense, and they should be paid for that.
So with big blue, I, I don't think it would have mattered, because the bridge is broken, I guess it's been, the bridge has been broken, they took it out. Um, big blue, e- even if we have out the footings, any of those structures that are out there, except for the little tunnel. They would not have said was safe, whether the footings were an issue or not.
I think, I think that's a good question, though, for Dan Perfoy, that, that should have been in the, in the bid for the school.
Well, it really would have been with the architects, it would have been with the architects, cause it would have been in the ground study, and it would have been in the, because Dan is just.
A manager.
Yeah, managing what was designed and what, what happened, so, like, big blue, it, it should, there, a playground person would have had to come out and inspect it. The, the, um, the slides, it, the one of them is a footing issue, one of them has a part that's. Uh, not either bent or something, some, i- i- that happened to it. The, it, the little tube is really the only one that if it, the footings were appropriate, would have been saved, big blue has. On the top of every pole, there's a little like plate. And if anything that now and then in the rules, anything that's bigger than two inches is a playing surface. So that means kids, they consider that kids could stand on the top of every pole, so that makes it unsafe, and big blue right now ultimately is. Three platforms, I mean, it's, it, they can't use the swings because they're too close to the play structure. So that big blue would have been an issue, I think, no matter what, and one slide would have been an issue, no matter what, the swings we never touched, the swings were not in the scope. They just are not super stable, like, he stood out there and pushed them and they wiggled. Um, so the swings are in the scope anyway, and even the play equipment that's out by the fence, we have to amend the, the, the fall zone. Um, he said it's not crucial, right now, it's not something you have to do right now, but you need to address it, so we need to put a barrier. They need to put either more pea gravel or something, because it's not enough, so everything out there, whether it was in the scope or not. Has to have something done to it, but the footings for the slides are really like one slide. And the one little tube are the things that would have been salvageable, but they're not. Now, at River, at, um, over at Heights, it's just the fifth grade playground, which is now a third grade playground. And that was a grading issue, so that was in the landscape design, which the landscape designer is no, we have a different one now, that, the person was Mark Putty, he's gone. So when they actually installed the, you know, started building the building, the grading was not. It was too, too much, so they had to regrade it out there, which then exposed the footings, he's not, that area, he feels like could be salvaged. I still think we need to do something out there, cause that stuff is. I think too tall for their graders, um, since they've swi- flip-flopped where the kids play, so I think there's a little bit we can do there. It's not as big of an issue as it is for you.
I have a couple other questions, we approved a new fourth grade teacher tonight, has she already started? Just start on the day, um, I talked to Tim Poole. The plan is that her fingerprints have already gone through, so we're gonna, she's starting early this Monday, I'll be calling the parents. We have our list of ready to go, um, she'll move into the art room, um, and then we'll have the art room on. Cart, and so we're able to move into our other session. And then, uh, we're gonna have a meet, meet the teacher night for those who are new parents and students, so she'll probably be with students. There's our tentative plans, please know what it's like, so tentative plan is Tuesday, we wanna get it as soon as possible. Um, important for, because of transition, she can be great, I'm super excited. She's, uh, taught for over twenty years, she's taught third, fourth and fifth grade and intervention, she's been on to P D I S. We're getting her PACS trained, um, she has been admin trained, like, we are so lucky, like. I'm super excited, like, she can be great. How many kids will we move from each classroom? There will be, we're taking four from which strand, um, eight in one class, and six in the other two. So every, every class, every fourth grade class should be roughly twenty-four kids. Yeah, it's great, and is that it has to happen after the fourth week of school? Yeah, third week, yeah, it'll be the fourth week, and I think it's what every fourth grade teacher talked about last spring, when they came and talked to the board, and said we should hire. Um, I know that the meeting, our last board meeting was not posted to the website. And, um, I emailed Sean about that yesterday, I know she's got a lot to do. And you have to go to the YouTube site or subscribe to it, I think that's gonna be changed, we need to post that procedure, so people can find that. We wanna always be transparent, so it's possible to go on the school district Facebook page or send out in the mass. Mass emails or on the website itself that say, hey, if you were looking for the board meeting, this is where you need to find it, I think, that would just. Good customer, good thing to do, um, nobody discussed the issue with the kindergartner that would not deliver home. On a school bus, last week, I was taken to the wrong place, there's information on that.
Yeah, um, I worked with the transportation director, and I worked with the principals about it. Um, they had been, uh, placed on the wrong bus, I believe, it, uh. The printout was different, uh, had a different bus code, um, so, yeah. Uh, we have dealt with that with our administrators, and we've set up new protocols, so. Um, it wouldn't happen again.
Did you call out there, Matt?
Uh, I didn't, uh, Amy dealt with the parent, um, or that was a concern once they lost him, and so she's a director of transportation. Um, it didn't, it didn't filter up for me, um, so usually I try and let principals. Uh, and our directors work on their issue first, and then, um, if they do need me in the chain of command. Um, either DNRI would be the next to contact.
We talked at the last meeting, there's a couple of others that mentioned this about also, that su- support for Anna, the high school office. Have we, any follow-up on that?
Oh, is Brian still here? Uh, we gave Brian authorization to hire a sub, um, to try and support that, so. Uh, I don't know if he's followed through with it or not.
And my last item was, when will we expect to see the Boys and Girls Club leave on for approval?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm working on that, uh, of course, every, it seems like every discussion I have. The work is deeper, um, I talked to Nick Alsberry at the city today about doing a change of residence. Um, I've been emailing, uh, our, um. So, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, have worked with the city, talked to Tom Glover as well, um, I'm working with. Foster Garvey, um, and it sounds like they had a sample contract that we could go off of. I've been in email contact with Brian Ace, um, so I'm hoping by the end of the month that Foster Garvey will get me something. Uh, I've worked with Clearer Solutions on it, um, so, uh, and each of these stakeholders had different. Um, kind of different directions and different people that they would ask me to talk to.
So we're thinking the end of the month.
I'm hoping so, yeah, a lot of it's in the, our legal counsel's hands with the development of that. And, um, not, not our general counsel, but our bond and levy council. Uh, they seem to have more expertise in that area and had actually worked on, um. An instance that was very similar to ours on the other side of the state, so.
Gee.
Okay, I'll be short and sweet.
You were done, right?
Okay, um, I've enjoyed some less dang sports, but I live so close to the stadium. That I don't have to go for a whole game, I can go out and catch twenty minutes, have something cooking and go home and finish it. Um, last week, Matt and I went to the old high school and sat down and visited with Big Spring kids. Kevin, we had a ball, if you wanna have fun, go and visit with elementary school kids, some of the stuff they come up with. Well, just is amazing, I, I had so much fun and I know Matt did too. Um, and then over the weekend, I was at a, an eighty-fifth birthday party, and I had three different people. Tell me that they love the information they're sending out on, uh, social media, I don't have social media. But I wanted to tell him thank you, I, they said they've enjoyed plenty of stuff out there, and that's, it's letting them. Understand how the school board and school district works. Understand how the school board and school district works. So thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Peggy.
Um, I, uh, first of all, personally, I wanted to thank, I welcome Amy, it's nice to, nice to see you and actually, um. Put a face to the conversation that we've had. Um, and then, uh, I live out in the Woodstrand area and. There has been quite a bit more um, gang sign out in the Woodstrand area. Uh, especially around, like that, there's a, a big white fence. Kind of behind the epic program. And it it surrounds, uh, I think there's a propane tank or something there, but it's school district property. And that had, that maintenance department has, has done a pretty good job down through the years of painting over it, but it's. It's really catching heck with, uh, it, the lower valley thirteen, so or thirteen, but it's really getting bad. And because it's not being painted over, the signage and that is now broadening out through the community, the gang signage. And so we probably need to get that painted again, but um. It it's, it's, the Woodstrand area is kind of taking a hit with the gang writing out there. So we need to, need to take a look at that. I don't know if that's happening here in town, if we're seeing more. Gang writing and, yeah, gang activity is picking up here in town again. And, but it's really been picking up the last couple of people, Woodstrand area. And um. And basically, that's it, it's just. Uh, I've been gone on vacation and that was pretty nice and I get. To go again for a couple of weeks in October, so I'm looking forward to that, but. Um, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, with uh, with what Peggy had said, it it actually is everything North of town is bad, the, the bridge, the overpass, uh, water boxes. Frank Lyles diesel tank's been hit twice in the last three weeks. Um, it's getting pretty obnoxious.
And a lot of, I don't know if it's kids or what, but a lot of. Like the, the phone, you know, the phone boxes that along O I E are being knocked over, like they used to. Baseball bats to uh, to mailboxes, now it's like baseball bats to the, the phone. The phone boxes out there along O I E, so not quite sure what's going on, but there's a lot of destruction.
Well, there, there is, there is definitely, if if things are being painted and they are not being covered, it will accelerate.
Right.
So um, that's well-known within um, gang interaction, that's how they challenge each other. So, we had several years ago, kind of a ad hoc community committee that went around and as soon as something was seen, they came and they painted over it. But I don't know if that exists anymore.
In, in the community, so this would be for the county, you're gonna wanna call the non-emergency dispatcher, call the sheriff. And they will have mediation measures for that, but you need, you need to, same as see something, say something, you need to, you need to call in, report it. Um, cuz oftentimes they'll take different tagging and. Farmer Deputy Thompson can talk about this, they'll take different tagging and the prosecutors and the detectives can link it up. And tie it to one person, so if they catch somebody, they can charge them with all these other ones, they have their different.
It's like fingerprints, because they do it the same.
If you catch home dump at the right time of the year, you can buy the mistants of a crappy paint for dirt cheap. We used to buy it by the five gallon buckets and we do the bridge and everything going to Pendleton and.
But yeah, call, call the county, call them, dispatch, call someone at the sheriff's department, they will talk to you.
I know.
If that's our property, then we need to take care of it, yeah. And maybe it's a call to inspire to say, hey, guys, if you see it, you gotta let, let us know so we can get someone out there to paint it up.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The police explorers used to be tasked with doing that. But the whole unit has transferred over to Pitten County Sheriff's, of course. Uh, perhaps you might talk to the Boy Scouts. That might be one path for you.
And then the only other thing I was gonna add to was Genie's comment uh, on Jason's post, which. Technically, I haven't seen, but I did get contacted a couple of times saying how much they appreciated the information, so. Uh, at some point, I'll find somebody to look it up for me so I can read them too. And that's all I got. Uh, which leads us to. Yeah, Jason commented first. Wanna comment some more, Jason, on your post?
I appreciate it, Jason.
No, I, I, I'm glad it's helpful, so.
It is, well, like I said, I haven't seen it, but I've, I've talked to two separate people that that both said it was extremely helpful. There was a lot of questions asked on, on how and why we do some of what we do, so, thank you.
Oh, I did, left one thing out, uh, Crosser High School lifetime student and alumni Sal Mendoza. Was appointed to the Ninth Circuit Court.
I saw that.
And one more thing that I forgot to mention, and so Rebecca Moore, you know, she had resigned a few weeks ago. Um, we are gonna wait on refilling that position if that's okay. Um, I just wanna get my feet wet and really learn the different positions and what we need. Um, and I talked to my team and everyone's willing to jump in and help um, with some of those duties in the meantime, so we wanna give ourselves a few months. Um, and then we'll refill it. So we did, um, we canceled the, the, we were gonna move forward with interviews, we decided to kind of hold up on that. Um, and then we'll move forward as we go. I told my team, if they get overwhelmed at any point, we'll get that refilled right away, um, but I think that. It's gonna be the best move, you know, we'll save a little bit financially, um, there will be a little bit more overtime in their expenses, but. Um, for the most part, they've got the expertise, they've covered that job for eight to twelve months in the past. Um, so I'm confident in our abilities and that it will give us a great game. I do, I love my team, I really do. Uh, so anyways, that's where we're at with, and that.
All right, guys, that leads us to. Future meeting, study session on the twenty-first, right here at seven, and I believe Jason and I will be here at six. Safety meeting, and then the next regular board meeting will be on the twenty-eighth, right here at six. And that leads us to adjournment.